It's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and start this meeting. Good evening and welcome to the May ninth Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually. As we have for three years now, but we are glad that you've joined us for this meeting during public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda. Community members wishing to. Sorry, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually and staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name, then you'll be able to make comment to council. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight, and then we will switch to those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per each participation session. We do ask that participants try to keep their comments to under three minutes. Thank you again for joining us tonight. We will now begin with the pledge allegiance and moments silence. So we will begin time with our roll call. Mr. Cracker. Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Cervino. Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
This one?
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
So you all here. Spare.
Here.
Manager here, assistants private vote chiefs here. So here you have it for. Thank you very much. We do not have any presentations on our agenda tonight. So with that, we'll open up our first round of public participation. Again, if you weren't joining us two minutes ago, we'll start with members of the public here. When you come up to the podium, please sign into our. List on it's provided at the microphone and provide your name and address for the minutes. We will begin with public participation for those members joining us here personally in council chambers. And once we've worked through that queue, we will go to our Zoom platform for any members of the public wishing to make comment. Via Zoom. Any comment tonight?
Good evening, everyone. You all know why I've come. You've heard me come and. Give my remarks about the parking situation on. East Grant Street. And I'm here only.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. It's Dennis B. Fenstermacher. My address.
Thank you. No. Just if you're a resident of the borough.
I am. I've been a resident for thirty five years.
Thank you.
I haven't heard anything from the Borough Council as far as your recommendations on how to solve. Or at least put a dent into the problems that we face on a daily basis. But I have an idea that you could adopt or reject, and that would be the borough already is paying a man. To check the curb distance between a tire and the curb. And on our street in particular, if we took. The distance between one car and the next car. And had a standard that man could perhaps once a week come up and check the cars and. Measure them. It's just a thought because I have been offered nothing yet from the council, and it's not a criticism. It's a very complex issue we're dealing with. And and you know, I've come here and made myself very clear. Now, I am very transparent about this. I would answer any questions that anyone at any time would have. And I wanted to thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Lefee. I am. A resident of the borough. I live on Diana Drive. I'm here with. Tom Gilhul, who's my next door neighbor. I just wanted to discuss. Some of you might already know, but for those of you who don't know, I wanted to discuss. A decision also not just the decision made by employee of the borough. His actions in making that decision. As it relates to lighting, what I feel to be a lighting violation for a property that is adjacent to my. House and the houses of others on Diana Drive. Specifically, the Phoenix Center, and I discussed this with Dave Volker. He's the director of code enforcement, as you all know. I feel I would like to be as concise as possible, but I feel without explaining. At least from beginning to end, what's going on, I would be leaving out important details for those who are not familiar with the situation. So I will try to go through that as quickly as I possibly can. Back in January of this year, I discussed with Brian, Mr. Volker. Parts of the ordinances of Phoenixville that I thought would be in violation that are in violation by the Phoenix Center with regards to their. Light poles in the parking lot and the lights on the side of their building. Specifically, I mentioned a couple of ordinances. And I feel that the wording of the ordinances are both very, very important in interpretation of enforcing the. Forcing the code. And the one that I specifically mentioned that I thought was the most. Significant violation is that floodlights, spotlights and omnidirectional fixtures, regardless of whether for residential or non-residential applications. Shall be installed or aimed that they do not project their output into the windows of neighboring residences adjacent uses skyward or onto a public roadway or pedestrian way. Obviously, my main concern there is that it projects the lighting. The lights from the Phoenix Center parking lot on the building, they project directly into the residences of my house, my neighbor's house and thirteen or twelve or thirteen other houses on Diana and West Phoenix Drive. And so I let Dave know this. Additionally, there is another smaller violation that is. Related to a light not pointing directly at the ground. That's. Not as concerning, but there is also small violation there. And one important point that I would like to point out is in the email that Dave sent back to me. After I gave him this, these codes that I thought there were violations for, he said, and I quote. Based on my and other staff's visits in as much as the fixtures, except one on the opposite side of the building from you. Do appear to point straight down. I would not pursue the code section stating fixtures shall be aimed straight down and shall meet IES and a. Full cutoff criteria. In the email, he says. Pretty clearly that one of the lights does not point straight down. That's what he said in the email. He said, one of the lights does not point straight down, but for some reason, he wouldn't issue a notice of violation based on that code. I've asked Dave repeatedly to call me and explain himself. He won't do it. Nobody will call me and explain to me why there's no violation on something that Dave himself stated a light did not point straight down. Right? So then the next one, the more important point that I wanted to emphasize. This is what Dave said in response to the projection of light into residents' windows. He said, some of the lights are mounted at such a height that while they point straight down, the lamping is visible and would not satisfy. Shall be so installed or aimed that they do not project their output into the windows of neighboring residences. Though this is clearly a weak passage to try and use as it provides no objective measurements to identify a violation. Strongly disagree with his interpretation because. The coding says that the lights may not project into windows of adjacent residences. And the fact that there is any measurable light at all is a violation of the ordinance. There is no measurement needed. If I can see a bulb from my window, then there's a violation. I asked Dave again to please explain himself why he would not issue a violation when he in fact himself said in an email to me. That part of the code would not be satisfied based on how it's written. His only, I guess. Issue with it is that there's no measurable. Light. There's no measurements in the code, which of course, again, does not matter. And to further emphasize. My own interpretation of the code, I wrote to Dave. That there was a different part of the code that specifically mentions illumination levels. This is what the that part of the code states. The intensity of illumination projected onto a residential property from another property shall not exceed point one vertical foot candle measured line of sight. From any point on the adjacent residential property. Any point. So the corner of my yard that I never use cannot exceed point one vertical foot candle. That is a measurement. And that was what he wanted to pursue, and he did pursue despite me actually not wanting him to pursue that. I actually explicitly stated in an email to him, I do not want to pursue illumination level violation. And he went ahead and did it anyway and got an engineer hired to do that. I did not ask him to do that. Again, let me just emphasize the code one more time. It specifically mentions. Projection into windows. So we have one part of the code that specifically mentions windows and another part of the code that mentions anywhere on the property. So I feel that there's a clear delineation there between the windows and anywhere on the property. So again, my interpretation being that if you can see any light from a window inside your window. That is a violation because it is measurable, any measurable light, which there is. So. You know, again, I went back and forth with Dave. I have multiple emails. I'd be happy to forward them to anyone who wants to read them. I went back and forth with him over and over, begging him, pleading with him to please call me and explain. I would not get an explanation. He instead told me the borough had invested enough time and money into trying to resolve the situation, and he specifically mentioned. The part of the code that I read about illumination levels, again, despite the fact that I did not want him to pursue that. So he went ahead and hired an engineer, and I did not want him to pursue that. I wanted an explanation on why we couldn't. Enforce the ordinances that I specifically mentioned. And he told me. You know, when I voiced concern that he wasn't pursuing that, he then said, and I quote, and I've disagreed with their interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And told you I would address it appropriately at my discretion. I am doing so and will no longer communicate with you directly about this. So he cut off communications with the resident of the borough. At no point was I rude. At no point was I questioning his authority. I just wanted to engage in a dialogue with him. I didn't really find that to be very reasonable. And again, I waited about a month to a month and a half. And then I got a response from him on in April that. Now he'd closed the matter based on the fact that he did not find a violation. With regards to the code. That mentioned the illumination levels. So again, he said the case was closed based on the fact that the illumination levels were not too high. You know, on my property from the lights in the in the Phoenix Center parking lot and on the side of their. Again, I responded to him. Asking again for an explanation. I must have asked for an explanation three or four or five different times, asked for a phone call. I didn't need an email. Writing a lengthy email can take a lot of time. I just wanted a phone call and I gotta say, I find it extremely unreasonable that someone won't give me a fifteen minute phone call. Despite the fact that, you know, the resource, the the borough's invested resources into the into the matter. I appreciate that they did that. But again, I did not ask for an engineer to be hired. I find it very unreasonable that Dave will not call me and give me a fifteen minute explanation as to why he won't issue a violation based on the two parts of code that I've been discussing. I think that transparency is important with employees of the borough, right? They shouldn't make decisions and not explain themselves. They shouldn't cut off. Communications with residents who are not being rude in any type of manner. I think we can all agree transparency is good. And that's how we hold people accountable. So the fact that Dave won't explain himself. Even something is, you know, he refuses to call me. I find that extremely odd. And a little bit troubling that he won't give me the courtesy of a short phone call. Instead citing multiple times that the borough has invested enough resources as if fifteen minute phone call would be so taxing on his time and then the borough. That it's not worth doing it at this point. I find that very odd. So. What I would really like to see in all this is. I would like a phone call explanation from Dave. Explaining why he won't issue a violation on these ordinances. Because I feel like my interpretation is a fairly standard interpretation of the ordinance written in the code. And then if I'm not satisfied by that, I'd like to know, does Dave have final say power over these decisions? He's one guy. You know, one person I feel shouldn't have the final say over all these decisions. He's not a perfect person. Nobody is. So can I? Appeal? Do I have any sort of recourse that I can go through to challenge his interpretation with the Borough Council? And and have some type of discussion regarding his interpretation. And then the final thing, if we did do all that and we came to the conclusion, you know, the code really is is not enforceable. We can't do anything about it. I would say Dave himself stated that there was a part of the code that likely would not be satisfied. But it's unenforceable. So in that case, the code needs to be amended so that it is enforceable. Otherwise, why is it in the code? Why is it? An ordinance that exists if it can't be enforced under the exact situation that it's describing. You know, I did have a proposed solution that would satisfy the. The requirements of the ordinance that they should put covers around the light so that the light would stop at the property line and it would no longer shine into the windows of residences adjacent to the property. You know, that that was my suggestion, but again, you know, not even issuing a notice of violation would. Render my suggestion useless because nothing's going to change at that point. So. You know, at this point, I really would like somebody to engage with me on this and let me know, you know, what are my next steps here? Can I get a phone call from Dave at least? Can I get some sort of explanation? That's really, you know, an open question to you guys. If anyone wants to answer that. I'd be happy to.
Sir, this is public comment only.
All right, then maybe at some point after the after the meeting, of course. I would really appreciate somebody to reach out to me, explain why Dave cannot give me a fifteen minute phone call explaining himself. And. I've made it so clear. In my opinion, that the ordinances are in violation. I just can't accept nothing being done. I can't do it. I need at least a phone call from Dave explaining himself so that I can further move on at that point. And then if I have any recourse, then I would like to also explore that option. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Gilhul. I'm a borough resident. I've lived at. Eleven Diana Drive, which is the house next to Stevens for over thirty years and. The nursing home in question is not a good neighbor. They. For example, they have a dead tree that abuts his property more than mine. And. You know, I don't want you to think I'm made of money, but I I'm retired from two jobs. I called the nursing home and I was going to say, hey, let's cut the dead tree down before it falls on one of his kids or one of my grandkids. No response. They didn't. They didn't even take my phone. So. Although. The situation's improved over the years. They used to have a lot of domestic disputes and loud music in the parking lot and shift change. That's kind of died down. And the lights. Stevens talking about, they were actually worse at one point than they are now. The code officer intervened and. If most of them have changed, but not all. And. Also, I just want to echo his comments real quick and say that I've heard from my neighbor who lives at thirteen. His name is Mike Basic. And Mike's in his eighties. He approached me about the lights too. So. Just want to let you know, it's not just Steven. It is a problem. It's affecting all of us. And to me, the when I called about the tree, when I called above about the tree, the answer I got from the code guys was, well, since a commercial property abuts a. Private residence, we don't really know how to deal with that in code. And my thing is, when the tree falls on somebody, then it's going to be too late. And you know, if anybody goes in a nursing home, my offer still stands. I'll pay half of what it takes to cut the dead tree down. Thank you.
And good evening. I've been told that I smile too much, so excuse me if I smile here.
If we start with your name.
Yeah, Andrew Karnowski. Five one eight Grove Alley. And it's my third time to speak before. It's been a while though. I was gonna mention, I I smile a lot is what I've been told. I think that's a nice way people tell me, saying, don't smile because you look better than you don't. But. I can't help it, you know, because when I when I moved from California to Phoenixville, I found a place that I love. I found a town that I absolutely love. I shared that previously, and what do I love about this town? I love it's safe. I love it's walkable. I love that. It's got a unique charm and history. And all those things are not going to disappear because of the efforts that volunteers like you make. And then thank you for that. And volunteers like me also, I'm going to take a little bit of pride in that because we volunteer in the community at the precinct. I volunteer. Serving on our homeowners association. So I come here in representation of the collective residents of Fillmore Village, who are all Phoenixville residents. Phoenixville first. And we're proud. We're proud to live there. We're proud to have our neighbors in Phoenixville. We do appreciate the representation of the government. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Webb. So I will continue because there's been some developments in the ongoing case with the proposed Adessa development next to us. And tonight, we understand that there's an amendment up for vote. And we've read the amendments, the council at our HOA board house. And we understand that the amendment provides some options. And that's that's really exciting, and it should provide options. We're happy to see that and provides the options to you, the Borough Council. So we would encourage you to pass this amendment. Because the amendment, as we understand, provides the option to go ahead with the development next to us and does so. So it can go ahead with the construction. We can go ahead and welcome new neighbors, and we can do so together. We can stop. Some fighting disagreements. I mean, you start the bridge building. But that only comes, of course, if you pass the amendment and you go to the next step and stand with us. Stand with us to not with the extension here, to not extend Ashburn, to not contain it through Adessa all the way to county to township. With that exception, we ask for you to pass this amendment. Please pass the amendment and stand with us. When we do that, we won't place the heavy traffic. On private streets in Fillmore Village. Yes, you took Ashburn. We know that, and we're happy for that. We're happy to welcome our neighbors. The traffic doesn't stop there. The impact to safety doesn't stop on Ashburn. The traffic patterns will continue into the rest of the neighborhood. But the traffic doesn't have to be car traffic, can be pedestrian only and emergency access traffic. That's a great option. That's what we want. And in fact, where Ashburn terminates right at the Spookel River Trail, that's a great place to build something. Build something that's a bridge between the two communities, not another road for more traffic. We don't need that. We have roads right next to us. Well, we're Fillmore. So let's build a garden. Let's build a rest stop. Let's build a dog park, something that's nice, something that builds on the treasure that is Phoenixville. Let's make it a nice spot for the current residents, your constituents, and the future residents to enjoy together. And everybody who's on that SRT. So there's not another crossing. There's not a risk to safety. Instead, it's a bridge between neighbors. Please stand with us in Fillmore. Stand with your constituents in Phoenixville. Build a Desa. Welcome new neighbors. Don't extend. At least not for regular question, emergency traffic. Yes, pedestrian traffic. Yes. Friends. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John McPhee. I am the business manager for Diving Cat Studio Gallery. At two forty six Bridge Street. I'm here for one purpose, which is to thank you and express our appreciation. For the upcoming inside outside open air market that will begin Labor Day weekend and run through early October. Just to share with you a little bit of the results of last year. Three out of four weekends a month, I set a table outside the gallery and engaged as many people as I could. I saw families, walking dogs. Kids on trikes and scooters, teenagers on trick bikes, musicians also. And overwhelmingly, people express their appreciation for the opportunity to be in the downtown and safely have fun. I have a very close friend who's in a wheelchair and he can't wait for the opportunity to be able to move about downtown freely as he can when the street closure happens. For us, it transformed Sundays last year. We used to close at six o'clock on Sundays. We routinely were open until eight or nine o'clock on Sundays. Our customers asked for that and they and that translated into Mondays. We're no longer closed at six o'clock on Mondays. We're open until eight or nine. We've added, we had to hire three additional people. Sundays routinely are now the second busiest day of the week and sometimes busier than Saturdays. This has all been a result of your leadership and your vision for the inside outside and making Phoenixville. A fun, entertaining place to come. We understand the enjoyment that people have as they're moving about and experiencing the restaurants and the pubs. We also understand our responsibility to create a connecting, compelling. Place that they might want to cross the threshold and come into the gallery. We are grateful to be a partner in Phoenixville and celebrated our fifteenth anniversary on March first. I guess we're not the newbie anymore. And with that, I also have to compliment. The administrative staff at the Borough, the Police Department, the Public Works. At any time that I need to interact with them or I have questions, I do get answers. Not always the answer I wanted, but I get answers and it's a cooperative. Relationship. We just want to thank you for your leadership and we look forward to another great summer. And we will continue to support the inside outside and open air effort. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the room at the moment, I will ask if anybody is on our virtual platform on Zoom. If you would like to make comment during this public. Period, please raise your hand digitally and we will select you in the order that it pops up on our screen.
I've turned on your microphone. Sorry, was that me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, my name's Marilyn Harvey and I'm a borough resident. I live in Fillmore Village on Sisler Road. I've been on the HOA for Fillmore Village for about four years now. And similar to what Andrew mentioned, we are in support of you approving the Adessa project with two entrances. I think you may recall in December, that was our original idea as well. And I think that that's that's a great compromise. And when we came. Several residents came earlier, we were really asking for the road, which can't go straight through because of the racetrack. For the road to be emergency access only. And you know, there were several reasons for that. One, we have a lot of children in our neighborhood that play and ride bikes and scooters all throughout the neighborhood. As well as lots of families with dogs like myself. And the SRT is right there. What Adessa residents and Fillmore residents are going to be using. The SRT to walk downtown for all the activities like the diving cactus mentioned and to cycle on that. So to put a road and cross through the SRT when there's already. Two crossings at Moyer Road and Township Line so close together. I. I ride the SRT all the way. You know, usually from Reading to Philly, and there's no town that has crossings as close together as that. And it will create quite a disruption. So what what we'd like to see happen. Is we're willing to work with the borough. We'd love to, whether it's a garden or frankly, we could even support an outdoor pickleball court because Fisher Park gets. All now, the rec center has been full nonstop for pickleball, and there's really no nice quiet spot for pickleball that's out in the open. So we'd be. Willing to support a township pickleball court or work with the borough in any way, whether it's, you know, the garden, dog park, anyway. To continue to enhance. Phoenixville. I'm adding a thorough road through a private development will create a lot of safety issues that we fear. And it it won't really alleviate. And it, it won't really alleviate the traffic because of the jutting that's needed, because you can't really go straight through. So with the enhancements on Moyer Road and using um Ashburn as emergency only, we think it's a win-win. Adessa gets through with their two entrances, what's um has already been thoroughly vetted. And um our neighborhood gets protected for safety um for our residents. So we hope you can support Fillmore Village and the residents there, thank you.
Uh Ms. Cook Ford, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you so much, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Dana Cook and I've been a borough resident since two thousand seventeen. Um my comment or concern tonight is directed towards the lack of community awareness on events happening at the new recreation center. Or really just when or how the public can access it in general. Um I saw on the borough's Instagram that there was supposed to be a spring camp the week of April third at the rec center. So I immediately went to the rec center's website and calendar and there was nothing noted there. So I commented on the Instagram post and I never received a response. I quickly called the rec center and someone called me back a few hours later to confirm the camp was canceled due to low enrollment. The information was super conflicting and again, there was nothing anywhere on the website regarding it, the rec center calendar was blank. I reached out to someone that works at the borough office and they were under the impression that the camp was actually sold out, so it just seems a bit all over the place. More recently, there was an event at the rec center this past Saturday that children could have enjoyed, however, there was nothing listed on the rec center's calendar. I saw it through a random post from a friend of a friend regarding it and how low enrollment and company awareness were surrounding it. So I guess essentially my takeaways or concerns are just who's responsible for informing the public? In which medium should we expect these communications? And how can I figure out very general facts on visiting and utilizing the rec center to the best of our ability without having to call on a daily or weekly basis? It feels like a relatively quick fix, thank you.
At this time, Mr. Ewald, there's no additional hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, we'll close this round of, of participation, move on to our, the rest of our agenda tonight. Starting off with item five, we have our consent agenda for which I'm going to be pulling out items three, five, C, three, five, and six. And moving then to item thirteen D for tonight's considerations, that's just C three, C five, and C six. We'll just get shifted into the normal agenda under item thirteen D. With that, any other items in the consent agenda that need uh any discussion? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries eight zero for the consent agenda that takes us to item six, our communications and council participation. Uh any updates for, for uh discussion from council today?
I'm just gonna beat the mayor by reminding everybody that Dogwood will be occurring next week. Um and we still do need uh volunteers, we are excited, it is the seventy-fifth celebration. Um so we're very excited for that. Um and then I just personally wanted to thank um all of our first responders and our neighbors on Nut Road. I unfortunately was involved in motor vehicle accident last week, it was pretty severe, and our first responders are always outstanding. Um so just want to thank both the police, fire, and tower direct, which are EMS. And then just the neighbors, I, like, it was such heartwarming to see neighbors really responding and it just goes to show Phoenixville is a very special place where the community does support each other, so just wanted to have that personal thank you, thank you, Mr. Ewald.
Thank you, any other council updates tonight?
Mr. Kirk. Yes, thank you, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to address the uh individuals from Diana Drive and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't get your names. I, I'm the chairman of the policy committee where we deal with things like this, I'm Rich Kirkner, I'm in North Ward. Um representative, I say that because not everyone can see our nameplates here. And we, we do have a policy committee meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-third at seven P M. So if you would like to come to that and address your issues there, um you would be welcome. May twenty-third, yes, Tuesday, May twenty-three at seven P M.
Thanks, Rich, I mean, Mr. Moore.
Uh reminder that next Tuesday is the uh primary election in Pennsylvania. Polls open at seven, close at eight, and uh just a reminder that there was a um voting location change in the North Ward. Previously, it was, was that North Ward one that voted at Franklin Commons? Am I correct on that, Mr. Kirk?
North one or North three, I can never, I think, I, I think it was North three.
Okay, that has been moved now to the rec center, so um both uh so the, those who are, anyone who's listening in or knows anyone who's a normal voter and normally voted at Franklin Commons, that has been moved now to the rec center, they should have, everybody should have gotten a notice, but it's always good to double check and remind you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Then we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, good evening, everyone, thank you so much for being here with us in person and those joining us virtually. A couple of things that have happened in the past and just want to point out, uh congratulations to the Phoenixville area high school musical theater group, uh they just finished a uh production run of The Addams Family. Also, a very special thank you for allowing me to make a cameo appearance as Cousin It in the production. Yes, you couldn't, I was literally in full Cousin It. Also, I, just a special thank you to our tree advisory committee, uh the green team and transitions team for a very successful Earth Day. It started with an extraordinary tree planting in Reeves Park, uh tree plantings not only in Reeves Park, but throughout the borough of Phoenixville. And then went on to a very successful Earth Day celebration up at Reservoir Park. Also, a very special thank you to People's Light Theater for hosting the community uh coalition. They are actually celebrating forty years here in the borough of Phoenixville and what they do is they really make sure that everybody in our community has a voice and has an advocate, so if you ever have an opportunity to check out the community coalition based right here in the borough of Phoenixville. Uh congratulations to our chamber uh of the Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce for an extraordinary golf outing last week. And also to our LGBTQ U I A Equality Alliance, uh which hosted a courageous conversations last Tuesday at Bluebird Distilling, it was an extraordinary conversation about the past of pride, why pride is important, uh what it means to our community. And it had an incredible uh diverse panel of speakers. So I would highly suggest, they do have a number of these courageous conversations taking place throughout the community. I would highly suggest, if you have an opportunity, check out the LGBTQ I A Equality Alliance Facebook page and you'll be able to figure out where all of those different conversations are taking place. Uh last week, we were also fortunate, I want to thank Mr. Crack and Mr. Ewald, uh and a number of our borough staff were involved in helping us host the policy committee, uh which was led by uh Representative Paul Freel. Our state representative brought the policy committee here to Phoenixville to learn more about our downtown and our revitalization. So thank you very much for helping to highlight Phoenixville. Uh coming up, we have on the twelfth of this month, our Provider or Appreciation Day, and that's to really celebrate um daycare and childcare workers. So we thank them for their service, certainly. On the fourteenth, a very special happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers out there and those who play a role as a mother in our communities. Uh on the Dogwood Festival as uh council, I almost called you Congresswoman, I hope that's maybe one day. Uh Councilwoman Beth Berkeley uh got us, beat us to it, but we do have the parade uh taking place on the twentieth. Um of course, this dates back to nineteen forty-three, and this year there is a new parade route. So I would highly encourage, when you have the opportunity, uh probably in the next couple of days, you'll see a lot of information coming out about a shortening of the parade route, the parade route is not necessarily changing, but will basically be on this side of the Gay Street Bridge. Being down Bridge Street, taking a right onto Main Street and going down to Fifth Avenue. Uh I would say in general, uh the reason behind this, and also I hope this is a call for volunteerism. Uh we actually have had a significant reduction in the number of volunteers that we have had uh in past for our fire police. Of course, the Dogwood Parade is a significant uh amount of resources, people resources to close down different streets throughout our community. And one of the biggest challenges is that we have a reduction in our fire police. If anyone's interested, we will be actually having classes probably here in the near future for those who are interested in participating and perhaps volunteering for the different events that we have here within the community. So uh that was one of the big drivers of the change of the route, uh but it is slightly shortened, but we also hope this will add to the festive atmosphere. So we can celebrate uh in between, it's still about um point seven miles of a parade route, so we can celebrate uh all the way. So I hope you come out and enjoy that at one o'clock on the twentieth. Uh on the twenty-second, we have Battle of the Bridge, it's at the rec center and it's through the Red Cross, that's our blood drive. Our patriotic celebrate day celebration takes place in Reeves Park, that's put on by the Kiwanis Club, that's on the twenty-sixth. Um of course, we want to make sure everyone has a very safe Memorial Day weekend, uh Memorial Day, of course, on the twenty-ninth. And also, as we remember those who gave their ultimate sacrifice for our country. June third is probably one of the busier days here in the borough. Uh we have Lemonade Day in the morning, which is being done through the Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce. It's a entrepreneurship program that encourages young people in elementary school to have actually lemonade stands. So you'll be able to go downtown and try a variety of lemonade stands and other types of uh youth entrepreneur stands and purchase uh from these young people as they learn about entrepreneurship. Um also, the bike park, uh the mountain bike park opening is scheduled to take place that day as well as the peace garden dedication, which is done through Sir Optimist, and that will be in um Manavon Park uh right next to the Fisher Tennis Courts. So uh June fourth, uh in the month of June, we actually want to uh give a very special shout out. And as we say goodbye for the retirement of Father John Nunes, who was the pastor at Saint Anne's Church, is retiring after a number of years of service to our community. So thank you, Father Nunes, for all that you've done for us. Uh June ninth, a very special congratulations to all of our graduates, we have our Phoenixville area high school graduation. And then June tenth, uh we have the Phoenixville, sorry, Chester County Pride Festival, which will be taking place in the one hundred and two hundred block of Bridge Street. So we hope everyone will come out and celebrate at the um Pride Fest for Chester County, a very fun, family-friendly event. So thank you all again, thank you for making this an incredible community.
Thank you, Mayor, sir. With that, we'll move on to item eight of tonight's point uh agenda, we have appointments. Uh we have one applicant this month, it looks like, for a position on our rec board, what is council's pleasure?
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frank Markey to the Recreation Board for the vacant term expiry, thirty of twenty twenty-five.
Second, motion by Ms. Webster and by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? He went through the police personnel process, so welcome award Frank, uh with all, with that, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. Uh a monthly reminder that we always have, we usually have vacancies on uh various boards and commissions, including uh this month at the moment, zoning, hearing, recreation, harbor, and human relations. If you're interested in joining any of the boards, various committees, boards, or commissions, please reach out to either staff or your borough council representative. And we will help explain the process to you, it is quite painless and quick. Uh with that, we'll move on to section nine of tonight's agenda, we have new business, a couple of new items for item A, what is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to authorize a three contract, independent contractor agreement, subject to review by borough.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on this item, I believe the constable is actually here with us tonight, if you have any questions for Jack, if not. Nope, okay, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Constable. With that, we'll move on to item B, we have a um uh grant application, initial letter of intent.
I will make a motion to authorize a submission of a letter of intent to D V R P C, participate in the submission of a charging and fueling infrastructure program grant.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the D V R P C grant letter of intent? Seeing none, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries eight zero. Moving right along to section ten of tonight's agenda for resolutions and ordinances, first on our list tonight is a uh final consideration. Okay, Mr. Solster, first, uh I would entertain a motion to recess the meeting as an executive session to discuss the next thing. Second, discussion, favor. We will be back. We will be back.
Next up this evening, we have the Phoenixville Plaza pad sites land development. And I believe we have Mr. Shulsky on behalf of the developer here this evening.
Hi, good evening. Deborah Shulsky with the firm of Riley Viper, Han and Cola Greco here on behalf of the applicant owner. We also have other engineers with us this evening in case you have any technical questions. You may recall, we were previously before you for this property at 1000 Nut Road, which is the site of the former Kmart currently self-storage facility for conditional use approval for a proposed Tommy's Car Wash and Starbucks to allow for redevelopment of this site to provide for better use of the underutilized parking in that facility. And as you know, you had granted the conditional use subject to a number of conditions of approval, all which have been incorporated into the land development plan that was subsequently submitted and had been reviewed by the planning commission and ultimately the planning commission made a favorable recommendation. So we're here tonight for your consideration of the preliminary final plan consistent with certain terms of resolution that I've been working with your staff on. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have. I know some of the language may still need to be vetted out. I think there's a few different renditions of the resolution. So I didn't know if council wanted to, if you had any specific questions about us regarding the project or if you wanted to talk about any of the conditions, we're happy to do that.
Just to add a little bit of background, I know council has already seen this project in two conditional use hearings. But for the benefit of the public, we're looking at a car wash facility, full-service car wash facility and a restaurant with drive-through use. Applicant has indicated that it's likely to be a Starbucks. However, this decision is not binding that that is the actual tenant or user operator of the restaurant with the drive-through. The plan shows a trail connection to the French Creek Trail to the north that runs along the main access drive and will hopefully connect to Nut Road. There are some easement concerns, so there is some language in the conditions of the resolution that allows for flexibility but would ensure the maintenance of the sidewalks if easements are not able to be ultimately reported against the property. Are there any?
I guess I'm confused. You mentioned there's multiple resolutions. We have one in front of us that's being presented. Is there other versions? Because once we vote on it, it just stuck.
So we we had discussed multiple options. But tonight there is a single version before us that provides some flexibility with the trail and sidewalk and easements and if easements are not able to be ultimately recorded against the property. I just want to make sure we're talking about the one resolution.
With that, we have the Odessa major revision plan before us this evening. Is there someone here to present the plan for the developer?
Hi, my name is Mike Leighton. I'm a senior engineer with BL Companies. We're here on behalf of the applicant Franklin Phoenixville seeking approval for the major revision to the preliminary final subdivision plans for the Odessa development. Just to kind of summarize, as you all might be aware, through coordination between the borough and the applicant, the plans have been revised to eliminate the connection between Odessa and Ashburn Road in Thelma Village. The revision only affects the eastern portion of the project in the vicinity of the surface storm or the basin there in the bottom right-hand corner. These plans were revised based on extensive coordination between SBL, the applicant, borough staff, borough consultants, borough solicitor and the fire chief. Of keynote is the emergency access is maintained between the eastern end of Road A and the Cooper River Trail to ensure that multiple access points to specifically the rear of the apartment building and the surrounding areas around the apartment building are maintained. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to either construct the full connection road or emergency access road to Thelma Village should those rights be obtained in the future. This is outlined on the Ashburn Road Connection Constant Plans. The applicant has reviewed and discussed the conditions of the resolution with the solicitor and agrees to comply with the conditions of the approval. At this time, I welcome any comments council may have on the application.
I would like to point out that there are a number of waivers of the subdivision and land development ordinance listed in the resolution. However, none of these are newly requested or newly granted waivers. These are all waivers that were a part of the prior land development. Uh, some have some like steel slate, um, kind of fall back to that history of the borough as, as a steel place, as a steel city.
And, and this may sound trivial, but the applicant is agreeing to the red brick.
Yeah, I mean, that's our plan.
We had another applicant who showed us a pretty red brick building and then built a white brick one. That's why I'm asking.
No, 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 um, that's, that's not at all.
Question, the red brick looks great. I just, I know it's not part of the application per se, but.
No, and that's, and we're going to be tying in brick on the sidewalk there when we push out to the sidewalk. And yeah, the, the red brick is meant to tie in to the borough and that, that's our intent. No intent to paint over that or put a different colored brick. It's meant to match and look like the other, a lot of other buildings within the borough.
Mr. Long, have you already been to the Harv for this project?
No, we are uh slated, I think, where we're going to work on getting our application in the next couple of days. We're going to try and get into the. The June meeting.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Moore and a second by Ms. Berkeley. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up this evening, we have the Phoenixville Plaza pad sites land development. And I believe we have Ms. Shulsky on behalf of the developer here this evening.
Hi, good evening. Deborah Shulsky with the firm of Riley, Viper, Han and Kyle Greco here on behalf of the applicant owner. We also have other engineers with us um this evening in case you have any uh technical questions. Uh, you may recall, we were previously before you for this property at one thousand Nut Road. Which is the site of the former Kmart currently self-storage facility uh for conditional use approval. For a proposed Tommy's Car Wash and a Starbucks uh to allow for redevelopment of this site to provide. For um better use of the underutilized parking in that uh facility. And as you know, you had granted the conditional use subject to a number of conditions of approval, all which have been incorporated into the land development plan. That was subsequently submitted and had been uh reviewed. By the planning commission and ultimately the planning commission uh made a favorable recommendation. Um, so we're here tonight for your consideration of the preliminary final plan. Consistent with uh certain terms of, of resolution that have been working with your staff on. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have. I know some of the language may still need to be um. Vetted out. I think there's a few different renditions of the resolution. So I didn't know if council wanted to, if you had any specific questions about us regarding the project or if you wanted to talk about any of the kid, it, conditions, we're happy to do that.
Start with council. Does council have any questions? Just to add a little bit of background, I know uh council has already seen this project and two conditional use. Uh hearings, uh, but for the benefit of the public, uh, we're looking at a, a car wash facility. Full service car wash facility and a restaurant with drive-through use. Applicant has indicated that it's likely to be a Starbucks, however, this decision is not binding that that is the actual tenant or user operator. Uh, the restaurant, the drive-through. The plan shows a trail connection to the French Creek Trail to the north uh that runs along the main access drive. And will hopefully connect to Nut Road. There are some easement concerns. So there is some uh language in the conditions of the resolution. Allows for flexibility, but would ensure the maintenance of the sidewalks if easements are not able to be ultimately reported against the property. There any?
I guess I'm confused. You mentioned there's multiple resolutions. We, we have one in front of us. That's what being presented. Is there other versions? Cause once we vote on it, it just stuff.
So we, we had discussed mul- multiple options. Uh, but tonight there is a single version before us that provides some flexibility with the. Trail and sidewalk and easements and if easements are not able to be ultimately recorded against.
Alright, I just want to make sure we're talking about the one resolution.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to then make a motion to approve a resolution in the council of the borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania officially approving the preliminary final land development plan. For development known as Phoenixville Plaza pad sites. As approved by the uh planning commission, six oh, and following our conditional use hearing.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore and a second by Mr. Weiss. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Resolution passes eight zero. Thank you. We will uh provide you with a copy of the resolution tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we have the. Odessa major revision plan before us this evening. Uh, is there someone here to present the plan for the developer?
Hi, my name is Mike Leighton. I'm a senior engineer with BL Companies. We're here on behalf of the applicant Franklin Phoenixville seeking approval for the major revision. To the preliminary final subdivision plans for the Odessa development. Um, just to kind of summarize, um, as you all might be aware, uh, through coordination between the borough and the applicant, the plans have been revised to eliminate the connection between. Odessa and Ashburn Road in Thelma Village. Uh, the revision only affects the eastern portion of the project. Um, in the vicinity of the surface stormwater basin there in the kind of bottom right-hand corner. These plans were revised based on extensive coordination between SBL, uh, the applicant, borough staff, borough consultants. Uh, borough solicitor and the fire chief. Um, of keynote is the emergency access. Um, is maintained between eastern end of Road A and the Cooper River Trail to ensure uh that multiple access points to. Uh, specifically the rear of the apartment building and the surrounding areas around the apartment building are maintained. Additionally, the applicant has agreed to either construct the full connection road or emergency access road to Thelma Village should those rights be obtained. The future. Um, this is outlined on the Ashburn Road Connection Concept Plans. The applicant has reviewed and discussed the conditions of the resolution with the solicitor and agrees to comply with the conditions of the approval. At this time, I welcome any comments council may have on the application.
I would like to point out that there are a number of waivers of the subdivision and land development ordinance listed in the resolution, however. None of these are newly requested or newly granted waivers. Uh, these are all waivers that were a part of the prior land development. And for the benefit of the public, uh, the way a major revision plan works is that it is a revision of the original plan. Uh, so the aspects of the plan that remain unchanged. We have already granted our approval for, and that is not a part of the review of this application. We are specifically looking at the things that changed. And considering that, knowing that the remainder of the project is. Any questions from council?
I do have one. Um, I was studying the, uh, you could bring it up, please. Describe the Ashburn Connection Concept Document. Just trying to understand a. A detail on it that seemed contradictory. And looking at the, the second sheet. Which uh, there are gray boxes that seem to indicate structures. Cause there's, um, there's one that's approximately where the apartment building is. And that there seems to be one down near the retention basin approximately where the crossover would be of the Cooper River Trail. That, that, what is that?
Uh, so that is a stormwater basin that would be necessary should the connection road happen. Um, if the connection road does not happen, that basin is not necessary.
Okay.
It's really to receive the runoff created by the road connection.
Okay, so it's not, because I know there's like, the previous page shows like a plaza or something. Uh, kind of adjacent to that area and I was just, you know, I was trying to read the, the key and so forth. So that's not. That's not what that, that's not a structure being proposed there or something like that.
It's an underground stormwater basin.
Okay, thank you. The underground part.
Yes. We'll see it in the surface, yes.
That was all my questions.
I had a question about where the apartment building is. So in the meantime, um, if that doesn't. Isn't built right away or maybe never built, what does the applicant plan to do with that parcel or that part of the plan in that interim?
Uh, so the, the intent by the applicant is to uh subdivide that piece of that portion that would be for the apartment building would be subdivided. Out and someone else will come in and, and construct it on our erosion sediment control plans. Uh, we outline basically a, you can say for, for temporary situation where it's basically just grading out the hill.
Okay.
More or less.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a stockpile of cops.
Okay, great.
Any further questions? Alright, we have a motion.
Beg pardon. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution officially, conditionally approve, approving the final. Resolution of the Borough Council officially amending the approval of the final land development plan, major revision for the development known as Odessa.
Any discussion by council?
I'm sorry, here's my mic. Uh, I just wanted to make sure this entire project has already been approved, approved by this council. So I'm just right now voting on whether or not to approve these um little run revisions. Revisions like are actually already, project's already going to happen no matter what, right?
Well, I, I can't speak to that. The developer speaks to whether it's actually built, but the project was approved showing the Ashburn Connection. And the revision removes it. So you are correct that we are tonight voting on the specific revised. Items in this plan, not, not the project.
Alright, then I'm just, I'm going to say that I have every intention of approving this, um, even though it's not normally something I would approve, but this is just. This is just a improvement to what's already been established, right? So, okay, thanks.
Any other discussion, the questions? We have a. Motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Moore and a second by Ms. Webb. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Resolution approved eight zero.
Thank you very much.
Did this next one come from policy?
No, it did not. This is something that. This will be the third time that we have pursued this. Uh, we had the extension from twenty twelve. We had the extension from twenty fifteen. Covid hit, fell off the radar, and so we're now bringing it back again for a third time.
And just so the public knows what we're talking about, we're talking about uh. Subordinate a motion, uh, seeking exemption from the liquor code statute. In order to impose our own noise ordinance, uh, because we believe we are uh better positioned to do so.
With that, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution seeking exemption from the liquor code statute regarding amplified music being heard on the premise, uh, licensed premises.
Second.
I'm back in charge. Okay, motion and a second. Into official handle, so. Questions on the motion for the liquor code statute?
If I may make a comment, um, it looks like this is a good way to put our new noise ordinance to work too. So.
So these are more stringent or more site-specific? What's, what's our, why are we better than?
It extends it by an hour.
Well, what happens is if, if there's a complaint, uh, the LCB has a set of. Rules that they follow. The difficulty though is that they have to assign somebody out of Westchester to come here to go after that. Well, by the time that officer gets here, the noise mayor may be gone by that time. The end result though is they came all the way out here. So they're going to issue something, not necessarily for that. So we've learned over the last two iterations of this that we have a great place for us and we have a great uh ordinance and. We could be real-time affecting the, the issue at hand, which is really what everybody wants. You know, somebody's hearing music, they want it to stop, not have to wait for somebody to show up from Westchester. So this is just a, a much better way of going about it. And it worked really well. Unfortunately, uh, the, the last uh extension expired at the end of twenty twenty. Uh, you know, where we were all at at twenty twenty, it fell off. Um, some noise occurred back around. October timeframe, LCB started to get back involved. So the restaurants came to me and asked me if we would start this.
And uh, state law, we can substitute this for the LCB.
It, it, what happens is we, we, we submit a petition, uh, so the entire package. Uh, the petition identifies the, the area. So the area that we've identified in this regard is the Harv District. So all. Of the restaurants that are within the Harv District, we have to list them and all of the licenses that are involved, all of the restaurants and what have you. We submit that petition. The LCB then uh advertises a hearing. We typically have done it at uh two twelve bistro on the second floor. That date is advertised properly, a hearing is held, information is gathered, it goes back to the LCB. They hear all of those results and then they make a determination and in the last two instances gave us the extension to do hearing.
Any further questions on the motion to adopt this resolution?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Pratt, for that explanation.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Motion carries eight oh. Item nine, we don't have any hearings tonight. We'll move on to section twelve, which is reports committees, boards and commissions, uh, funding commission, Mr. Moore.
Um, other than the events we just reported on, um, no other projects. Uh, the planning commission meeting for, scheduled for this week. Uh, is canceled because there are no projects ready to come in front of the account, uh, commission. So our next. I'm sorry, I don't recall the specific date, but our next uh. June, yeah, so the next planning commission meeting will be June eighth.
Good, thank you. Ms. Dugan with Harv.
Um, we covered everything.
Thank you. Ms. Kirchner with the Regional Planning Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The Regional Planning Committee at its last meeting issued a um consistency review letter. To the borough regarding the Paradise Village Development Proposal. And it, uh, we discussed this letter quite a bit. It's one of the most strongly worded, if not the strongest. Worded letter, uh, in my experience to come out of the PR PC, uh, PR. PC, yeah, I'm looking at the uh, the draft of it and it says PR CP. But um, in, in any event, um, we found it generally consistent with the. With the regional plan. However, we did note six bullet items, five bullet items that um. Need to be addressed to meet consistency with PR PC policy. And also um, another five bullet items recommendations. To advance policies of the Regional Planning Committee, so um. And this, this is in the process. Um, I don't know where it is with planning commission at this point, but. But uh, ju- just to let you know that there were a number of issues that the Regional Planning Committee. Had with this development that, that hopefully get addressed in the review process. Other than that, nothing going on, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, I got a bunch of stuff now. And now here's a good one. There is a parents' night out that we are offering. To drop the kids off and enjoy a night out on the tail. That's going to be at the Phoenixville Recreation Center on May twelfth, June ninth. And July fourteenth from five thirty to eight thirty. So that's something that you should mark on your calendars. Um, then we've got a fresh-to-you mobile market, which will begin on June seventh. And be every Wednesday thereafter from ten to twelve thirty, well, until November eighth, from ten to twelve thirty. Then there's the blood, blood pressure screenings with a nurse on site every third Tuesday beginning May sixteenth from five thirty to six thirty. Um, the blood drive, I believe, was already mentioned, but uh, that's May twenty second from two to seven. The car seat check, which is free to families, is May twenty sixth from one to four P M. Uh, outdoor camps are beginning and they will be, there are three individual weeks. Uh, June twelfth to the sixteenth, June twenty sixth to the thirtieth and July tenth to the fourteenth from nine A M to twelve thirty P M. Check the uh, um, the website for more details. Uh, we've got Quad Ball Quidditch Camp. Which is a unique combination of elements from basketball, dodgeball and tag. That will be a friendship, um, I'm sorry, pat and naddle field. June twelfth to the sixteenth, or there's another one, August twenty first to the twenty fifth. Or uh, from nine A M to twelve P M for grades uh four to six. Ultimate Frisbee Phoenix Academy. Um, that is June twelfth to the sixteenth. And that is for kindergarten to eighth grade. The Tennis Clinic and Orange Crush Tournament is starting in uh July, July tenth. And with the tournament, July thirty first for grades two through twelve. Soccer shots is starting June twentieth to August eighth. And um, different days and times for depending on uh this length of how long you want to be there for ages two to eight. Monthly yoga wo- wo- workshops and specialty classes. There's a June eleventh one, a twelve. Um, June eleventh, a July twenty third, and uh, they have different. Ideas like intentional wish or quidditch and medicinal, um, I'm sorry, qigong. And medicinal breathing, that's from four thirty to six thirty. Then there's co-ed volleyball and. I don't have any more details on that one. So I don't know the date on that one, but that's the last thing I was going to mention. So that's everything.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Without move to Ms. Berkeley with trade advisory.
I don't have any major updates at this time, um, but we will be planning the dogwood at the end of the.
It's a nice touch. And a nice tradition to return to. Uh, we'll go back to you for uh personnel and public safety.
Uh, nothing at this time. Thank you to Mr. Weiss and Ms. Webb for pitching and covering for me, but we had all our action already um in the consent. Or in our other action, in our opinions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore, Parks and Recreation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there were three items moved from the consent agenda, um, temporary event. Uh, applications that I'm just going to ask for. So the first one is I'd like to motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Phoenixville Car Show at Reeves Park Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. From eleven A M to three P M, the street closures with Third Avenue between Main Street and Star Street from nine A M to four P M.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? And this is just a, a static car show, not a.
Yeah, and no flying cars either.
No, okay, that's just. You know, George Jessup was. Other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Motion passes seven zero one, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Bed Races Event Saturday, November fourth, twenty twenty-three from eleven A M to two P M. Third Avenue to be closed between Main Street and Star Street and B Street and Park Avenue between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue from nine A M to two P M.
Second, motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero one, Mr. Moore.
And I'd like to make the final motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Firebird Festival Veterans Park on Saturday, December ninth, twenty twenty-three. From five P M to ten P M, street closures on Mari Road between Saint Mary's and Northridge Drive from four P M to eleven P M.
Motion by Ms. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on this motion?
I'll just offer that we did discuss that, you know, uh, some of the key rules and uh operating principles that were established last year. For this event, uh, are, were part of the event application. So we will be, um, the same rules will be applied for this, this year.
And, and attending last year did seem like it was a smoothly run event and, you know, rules were followed and so it seems like we're, we're, uh, we have a good partnership there now. Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero one. I guess we could have just bundled those, but anything else out of Parks and Rec?
Um, nothing, nothing major. I, I will offer that, uh, I did see a notice and I was just double checking it that the uh. Phoenixville Bike Park, um, will have its ribbon cutting, uh, Thursday, June first, five to sixth. Uh, so that's, that's coming up.
It might be June third. We'll have to come back to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they were going back and forth on that one day. I think June third was.
That'd be, that's the grand opening. There's a ribbon cutting.
Sorry, yeah.
That was, yeah, I believe it's separate ceremonies, ribbon cutting on day, grand opening.
Got it. So we're both right.
That's good. Uh, and our next um committee meeting is on the next Monday, on the fifteenth.
Ms. Kirchner, policy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council schedule and advertise a um. Meeting for an ordinance amending chapter fifteen. Looks like parts two and four and seven of the motor vehicle code.
Second. Motion by Ms. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion to schedule and advertise? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries eight, zero, Mr. Kirchner.
And also I'd uh make a motion for council to advertise and schedule a hearing or for an ordinance amending. Chapter one, administration and government, part four, uh, bureaus, boards and commissions with regard to. Uh, section A beautification advisory commission. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion carries eight zero, Mr. Kirchner.
Nothing else. I'm getting a low battery note on my computer, so I better be quiet.
Sounds good. Mr. Weiss, uh, infrastructure, technology, transportation, sustainability?
Yes, thank.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. No action to report at this time. Lots going on and exciting things. If anybody would care to join us for our next meeting, it will be held on Monday, the 15th at 7 p.m. As opposed to our traditional Tuesday meeting. The rescheduling is due to. The primary elections that Mr. Moore alluded to earlier. So you can come out and join us for the ITTS meeting and that you can get out and vote on Tuesday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Dugan, finance?
Approved everything in the consent.
With that, we will open up our second final round of public participation for tonight. We'll start with members of the public who are joining us in public in our council chambers. And then move to our virtual selection of any folks who are joining us on our Zoom platform. So. Any members of the general public wishing to make any comment who are in chambers with us tonight, please make your way up to the podium, write a name and address. While we queue up the line here in council chambers, any members of the public who are joining us on Zoom who wish to raise their hand digitally, please feel free to do so and we will select you as. As, as you pop up on our screen on this end.
You'll lose, I've turned on your microphone, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to comment about the Odessa discussion. And the. Missed opportunity for council to clearly be transparent with your intentions. On the purpose of requesting the revision. And why you passed it this evening with little discussion. I'm in the know, so I know why and what the intentions are. But there's others that are not unfamiliar. They don't know the detail. And I think it would have been forthright if you just very clearly spelled out what the purpose of the revision was. And, and why you took that action. And what you expect to occur in the future. You had a couple of passionate residents from Fillmore Village. Who I'm on the board with, offering great ideas and concessions and hoping to keep that road clear. But you all sitting there tonight, when you discuss this and pass it. No, that is not the intention. You have your six drawings set. That will be quickly inserted and that is basically the original plan. And I just think it would have been fair to clarify that for everyone. We understand your position. But there's no reason to. You know, I don't know what you're hiding behind. But I'm disappointed. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Mr. You all, there's no other hands raised at this time.
Seeing no members on Zoom and seeing no members in the public who oppose the second final round of public participation and open up round 15, right, 15 of communications council participation. For any items of council wishes to discuss, I will just say, as Mr. Weiss mentioned, we are moving our two scheduled meetings that were scheduled on 16th to the 15th. That's Parks and Rec at six and Infrastructure at seven. They will be on Monday instead of Tuesday. It is on our website. It is on the last page of our agenda. Any other council participation or updates for tonight? Seeing none, staff reports are in your packets for manager, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, human relations and recreation. With that, we do have the need for executive session to discuss personnel, real estate and litigation. What is council's pleasure? We'll be not voting on any items. So we will not be returning from executive session. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn into exec. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you next month.